Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your patience as we fixed our technical difficulties, but we are good to go according to Jared. So I'd like to call to order tonight's Raider City Council meeting for September 9th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. Roll call, please. Ms. Klein.
Member Horton.
Present.
Member Neary.
Here.
Member Neiman.
Here.
Member Kelly. Member Judd.
Present.
Member Lovins.
Here.
City Administrator Fawcett.
Here.
City Attorney Edmondson.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here. Appreciate everyone's attendance, and if we could now please rise for a moment of silence and a pledge of the flag. Thank you, everyone, for that moment. Next up on the mayor's report, we had a really exciting week or month here. We opened up the new Green Devils Field over next to the high school. It was well-attended, and it was a great performance by our Green Devils. So we're very proud of our kids that are winning football games. We're very proud of the school for what they're doing, building that community right next to us. Next up, we'll have approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Member Neary's made a motion to accept the approval of minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Judd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Next up is, we're going to open up the podium for anybody who has comments they want to bring out tonight's agenda. So again, the rule of thumb is if it's on tonight's agenda, the podium is yours. You're welcome to speak to council. I don't see anybody bum rushing the mic, so we'll go ahead and close that out as well. Next up are our ordinances. The first is the second reading of ordinance 2025-4. Ms. Klein, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the City of Dayton Code of Ordinances titled Code Enforcement Board to update the ordinance to provide more clarity to organizational and regulatory requirements in the ordinance.
I discussed this at the last meeting. This is sort of a cleanup ordinance, changing some things to be more consistent with our current practices and also reflecting changes that we've made in Code Enforcement Department.
Thank you, Ms. Klein, Mr. Fawcett. Do we have a motion to accept 2025-4?
I'll make that motion.
Member Neiman's made a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Member Horton's made a second. Do we have any conversations or questions regarding 2025-4? All right, we'll go ahead and open this up for a roll call vote, please.
Member Lovins. Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. Next on the docket is the second reading of ordinance 2025-5. Ms. Klein, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Dayton, Kentucky's annual budget for the fiscal year running from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the city to the full extent authorized by KRS 8208-2 and interpretive case law.
So when you adopt a budget, you don't know exactly what's going to happen. It's clearly an estimate. So under state law, we're required to adjust that budget at the end of the actual year after we have recognized the revenues and expenditures to reflect the true nature of our budget. That's what this does. Jared can answer any questions specifically about it, but that's why this is on the agenda for a second reading.
So this is a second reading. Do we have a motion to accept 2025-5?
I'll make a motion.
Member Horton's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Judd, which opens up for conversation within council. Does anybody like to discuss 2025-5?
More of a comment than anything. I would just probably like to see, other than us cleaning it all up at once at the end of the year, more often than that. I believe it's best practice to do it as needed or monthly, something like that is what I heard through the KLC group that you guys sent me the training for.
Yeah.
So I would probably just like to see it more often. That way it's more transparent, more up to date with the budget as we go throughout the year.
Yeah, we've done it in the past a couple of times, but I think, I don't know if we've done it. I don't remember doing it twice or three times this time, but I know in the past years, we have done it a couple of different times, but we only did it once this year.
Okay, thanks.
Does that make sense?
Great comment. Thanks, Aaron. That training pays off. Excellent. Any other comments, questions, concerns regarding 2025-5? We have a motion by member Horton. Second by member Judd. Ms. Klein, please.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The last on the ordinances for the evening be the first reading of ordinance 25-6. Ms. Klein, please.
An ordinance providing for the imposition, levy collection, and apportionment of taxes for the City of Dayton, Campbell County, Kentucky for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
So this is a first reading of the tax rate. We have to establish this every year. I sent an email out yesterday kind of explaining a little bit about the compensating rate. So we are only allowed to raise our taxes by the compensating rate, which is the same amount we got the year before, plus 4%, which is designed to allow us to cover inflation. For the last three or four years, we've done the 4%. Most cities do the 4% because you're losing money if you're not doing that because your costs are going up and you're not getting additional tax money to pay for those inflationary costs. But this year, because of the financial situation, the city's in good shape, we decided that we would just do 2%. And that way, we would actually be able to reduce our city rate for another year, making it, I think, the lowest rate now we've had in 16 years. So instead of taking the full percent, we're recommending only 2%. And we think that because of the financial stability, that we'll be fine with just that raise, but also keeps us from raising the property tax above where we are right now. So that's our recommendation to city council.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett, on the recommendation. Do we have a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance? No, this is just a first reading. Actually, just it.
This is first reading. We are going to have a special meeting at the end of the month on Tuesday, the 30th. I think I mentioned in my email, we'll meet here at 5:30 for a second reading on this ordinance, and then we'll have our joint meeting with the school board at the school board chambers.
Excellent.
We have to do that because we have to get our tax bills out next month. All the cities around the state are scrambling to do this right now.
So thank you for the first reading. Next on the docket will be Order Resolution 2025-23 Romeo. Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution accepting the per-unit bid of TMS Construction Incorporated for future concrete work within the City of Dayton.
So we did this about three years ago. This allows us to do concrete projects throughout the city without bidding them out every time, which is time-consuming, inexpensive. And so if we select them, if we advertise for various contractors to do this work, and we select one, then we can use that contractor for the next year. And we also have years two and three that can also be done. Last time, we, Hindi Contractors were the lowest bidder, and we used them to do the work. But this time, JMS came under their bid, and we had two other bidders as well. So we're recommending that we approve the contract with JMS, with TMS Construction, Inc. They're based out of Fort Thomas, to do concrete work in the city.
Thank you for the explanation. Do I have a motion to accept Order Resolution 2025-23 Romeo?
I'll make that motion.
Member Neiman's made his motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second been made by member Judd. Ms. Klein, please.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Do we have discussion?
Yeah, we kind of skipped discussion.
Oh, I apologize. You're right. Do we have any discussion regarding 2025-23 Romeo?
Yeah, so one comment, one question. One is, I like the detail of mapping out all the different bidders up top. Much appreciated there. I like that. And then question is in there, I'm not seeing anything that details timeline for completion. And I don't know if that's standard in these contracts or not, but so we have to bid it out, say we need a project done, we'll tell them that we need it done. Is there a timeframe that they have to get that completed by?
No, but I mean, each project's different. We don't know the timeframe until we know the scope of the project. So it might be something that takes a week or takes four weeks. I don't know. So we've not had a problem in the past with Hindi. It's a slot us into their schedule, but if it's been a problem, we probably would do something like that. But I don't recall that being in there, but I have to look at the bid documents and I don't think so. But it's never been really a problem in the past. So if it is, I guess we'll have to deal with that. But yeah.
All right, thank you.
I had a question, Jay. Would this work with the incentive program for the sidewalk? Would we be able to let the citizens know that they could work with this specific?
They can. So we have three or four contractors that are approved, and they are one of them. But we also want to get bids from a couple others when we do these projects. So even though this bid is generally going to be cheaper than the other ones, or the large projects, another one might come in cheaper than on an individual project. So they'll be one of the people we send the project to and say, give us your, what you want to do this project for. They have to abide by what these rights are here. So we get that number based on these rates, but we're also going to let other contractors bid on it too in case they're lower than that. And that has happened. But usually, my, our experience is that Hindi, when they bids on these contracts, are generally cheaper than the other ones are because we have a cheaper rate here, and we negotiated it through this process.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that skipping protocol. Do we have any other conversations about 2025-23 Romeo?
Does this include or exclude the Riverwalk project?
It excludes. That's a separate federal contract, and would have to be bid through a whole different process. So that, I've got some information on that. It's about ready to start, but that's separate.
And the same for the Dayton Pike Sidewalk?
Same thing. That's got to be bid through the state KYTC process, and that's different than this. This is for, like, when we do asphalt repaving, we have to do all the ADA ramps. That would be one thing. Or when we had the project out in Grant Park, we use them for that, too. So that's, it's just local projects, not anything with federal money.
City project.
City projects. That's correct.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other conversations regarding 2025-23 Romeo? Roll call, please, Ms. Klein.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The last on the docket for the evening for orders resolutions, Order Resolution 2025-24 Romeo. Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Dayton, Kentucky, and the Commonwealth of Kentucky for statewide emergency management, mutual aid, and assistance.
So this is a resolution requested by the Kentucky Emergency Management Office through their local Campbell County office. Whenever there's a major disaster, which we've seen in Kentucky, unfortunately, several times the last couple of years, a lot of cities send people down to help. So this kind of helps set forth the protocol and kind of organizes that process better than what's been done in the past. And the Kentucky Management Services Office will also help us with FEMA recovering any monies. If we send firefighters down and expend city money, they will help us recover that money through this process. So they request us to do that. A lot of cities in Kentucky are approving this at the same time we're doing it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. Do we have a motion to accept 2025-24 Romeo?
I'll make the motion.
Member Lovins has made a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Member Horton's made a second. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns regarding 2025-24 Romeo?
By entering this agreement, it's just like a blanket agreement with the safety, with the people. I think James Sparks, he runs that department in Campbell County Safety Department. Is that what we're entering an agreement?
Yeah, he's the one who requested us to do that. He's the one who requested this.
Good question. Do we have any other questions, comments, concerns for 2025-24 Romeo? Roll call, please.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and so concludes tonight's Order of Resolutions and Ordinances, which brings us to the Department Director's monthly reports. So first on the docket, we always like to do ladies first because we're proper southern gentlemen over here, and southern ladies as well. Ms. Patterson, Code Enforcement, please.
Oh, you have a copy of my report and Bill's report. I'm the same thing, grass. I think people are finally getting a handle on their garbage cans, where to put them, what's going on with them. I think Rumpke is doing a great job. I don't see as much trash out in the streets. That's a good thing. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is I am on the Family Resource Committee, and they're looking for mentors at the school. If anybody's interested, if you want to shoot me an email, and I can send you the information.
Give us, so the mentor thing, so is anybody from the community?
So they're looking for adopt a class and the mentoring programs. The mentoring program is kind of a one-on-one type of deal. You go for about 20 to 30 minutes once a week. They like for you to come usually during lunch, just kind of have a little conversation with them. How's your week? That type of thing. They want you to start out at a younger, it's kind of a little bit of a commitment because they want you to start out when they're young and kind of move all through elementary, middle, and high school with them if possible. That's the plan. They do have a lot of mentors, which I was kind of surprised to find out that had started with kids in like, you know, first grade, and they've gone on with them through college, and they kind of still keep in communication. So it's a really nice program. The other thing they're looking for is an adopt a class, and it's usually a business. And then different speakers from the business will come in, like, say, for instance, if it's, you know, like, the Coca-Cola company, they would have, you know, maybe like some bottlers come in and kind of tell what they do. And then they would have like the attorneys come in and tell what they do. And then this, you know, secretaries come in and tell what they do. And it's kind of like a monthly thing. You go and you visit a class, and of course, I guess you bring little like trinkety-type things or information or coloring pages. So that's also what they're looking for. But they're looking, I think the mentoring program is a little bit more in need than the adopt a class. So I told them I'd throw it out there at the council meeting and kind of see where it lands. But I can hook you up with the right person if you want to send me an email, or you can contact the school directly, however you want to do it. But it's a pretty neat program, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
We love collaboration between the schools.
I know. It's great. We have a meeting once a month. We kind of go there and kind of throw around things. And it's, the Family Resource Center is, they do amazing things for the school. Yeah, that's it. Does the mayor have any questions?
With the, you mentioned about people are getting used to the garbage cans, but I still see a lot of garbage cans left out seven days a week on the sidewalks. And I know we're probably giving somewhat of a grace period. When are we going to start reminding people to get them off?
Pardon me? I do. If I see them out. Now, typically, I give people a full 24 hours after the garbage because, you know, some people work late, or, you know, they think their kids are getting it, and they're not, and that type of thing. But typically, I'll hang a door hanger, or I'll send them a notice and just say, hey, you know, these cans really need to be put back. A lot of times, they're calling and saying, my sister said she wanted them, and she's supposed to come and get them. And, you know, so there's still a few scragglers out there. But.
You look at Alex. Is it Alex?
I'm not looking at Alex. He got a nice little notice from the code enforcement lady.
Could you rectify that, Alex? I'd have to call my city attorney against you. Wow.
But I also think that's happening as well, is some people don't, I think some people don't realize about the recycling. So they're like, we don't need this can. So they put it in front of their neighbors, and then the neighbor puts it back in front of theirs, and then it's kind of back and forth. Because I've had people actually call and say, these garbage cans keep showing up in front of my house, and I don't know who's they are. So, you know, I advised her to call Rumpke and, you know, that type.
What's that address again?
Do you have some? Are you looking to take some or drop some?
I'm just joking. I use my recycling.
I've actually thrown some in my truck and taken them up Public Works because, you know, somebody elderly will call and say, I have, I don't know how to call Rumpke, and I don't want this can, and blah, blah, blah. Yes. Right, right. So, yeah, if you see any, call me. Give me an address. I'll ride by.
No, I was just wondering. I know that, like I said, we're giving everybody the chance to get used to the new. And I know with the 95-gallon cans, a lot of people have, we didn't eat them.
Right.
That large. And Rumpke was very responsive. All I did was get on their website, tell them, please swap these out for 232s, and we're good to go. But I know that's been the excuse.
And I can call, I mean, I have a direct connection. I don't want to call 8,000 for 8,000 residents, but I don't mind, you know, a few if they need, if they have a problem getting through, or if they, you know, some people work all day, and they can't make phone calls. So if they want to, you know, call me and leave me a message on my line, I'll be more than happy to, you know, help them out.
Well, I think the biggest occurrence of it is with the multifamily buildings that we have. I mean, they could have, you know, 10 trash cans out there, the big ones, which takes up the whole sidewalk.
A lot of room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you are starting to send out reminders.
We are, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. That kind of moves right along the public works. So, Mr. Lucas, you mind?
Just another day.
You guys have been a little busy lately.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're real busy. One thing I want to let you know about, the Not Hole baseball coach from, I forget what college it's from, Thomas More, he's starting to play games on Friday night at Geller Park.
Yeah.
He's already cleaned the field up and everything. And so this Friday, you're going to have lights on everywhere, the baseball field, football field. So I should get a look of what it's going to look like when it's all done down the park.
Nice.
So it should be pretty nice.
I told Rick he might want some of his folks to park here in our parking lot because I'm sure it's going to be crowded there with the football game going on. But we have available parking here, so let them know they can use that.
And they have eight Dayton kids on the team.
Great.
And I think five other places. I'm not sure where at.
Is he the coach at Thomas More? Is it Thomas More?
Yeah, Thomas, well, he coaches the league down here in Dayton during baseball season. He's the one that took care of the field.
He's coaching Not Hole, young kids.
Yeah, and he's doing this, too.
It was a nickel. His last name's Nickel. I saw him out there with a tiller by themselves. They did, they tilled that whole infield, man. That was impressive to see the community coming there.
They take great care of it. Don't have to do nothing. And it works out good. Other than that, I mean, we've just been typical busy, ins and outs. And, you know, Jay, I talk about a couple of things probably for the nights over with. But other than that, I don't really have anything else.
I will say, Rick, Friday night's game is a homecoming game. Parade starts at 5:30 from Davis Field to the new field.
So the avenue, one side will be blocked, I'm assuming. So that should bring a lot more people in with everything.
Contact me whether they need public work.
We just did.
What's that?
I didn't say anything.
I'm just giving you the FYI.
Yeah.
We probably ought to get with Rick Wolf and find out if they need any.
Normally, I don't have to do anything, but the parade probably started, the parade started.
Davis Field.
Well, we'll do a letter of control and everything down the route before we leave at day.
And it starts at 5:30.
Okay. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
I had no idea what that meant, but have a good evening, sir. Thanks, Rick. Next on the docket will be Fire Department. Chief Shaver, how are you doing, sir?
Doing good. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. Everybody has a copy of my report. Last month, we made 195 responses, 65 fire and 130. Training, just training every day. So far this year, we're a little over 1,700 hours at the end of the month in training. We did teach one CPR class last month. So we did get the training center that was down Third Street. We were able to get that moved up on Wildcat Drive, so sharing that with Newport. So we're working on, got a fence around it, looking to get it painted and get it fixed up so we can both use that. So it's going to be good for both of us. We pretty much run together on fires anyhow. This FYI, our ambulance was involved in a accident down in Fairfield, but it's, actually, someone took care of us. We had it repaired and back in the street in 10 days. So it was pretty amazing on them.
When that's down, we have the backup. There's a Newport.
Right. There's a county backup, which was in use. Usually, when we're going to be down, we'd get Newports, it's closer and easier because they have an extra one if we need it. But if not, there's a county backup ambulance, too.
But we actually have the Newport backup ambulance in our firehouse, right?
We did for those 10 days, yeah. But ours is back. We were, found a great deal, our rescue tools, our jaws of life we had, we purchased them back in the late 90s. We couldn't even get parts anymore. Got a great deal through Vogapool. So we were able to get all new rescue tools. So they will be actually here Thursday. Pretty excited about that. We'll be training that, probably still get some cars to go down there like we talked about. But at Riverfest, that was uneventful. Thank goodness. So that was, that was good. And then I just want to touch base on, it's that time of year again. It's beautiful out, beautiful evenings. Everybody wants to burn. Open burns are not still permitted until October 1st.
Let them know that that's a state law, right?
Correct. It's state EPA law. If you are going to use a fire pit, Kentucky Fire Code, Chapter 3, they must be commercially manufactured for burning. They must not be within 15 feet of any structure or anything, or any other combustible material. Someone must constantly attend the fire, attend the fire until it's extinguished, and there must be a water hose or portable fire extinguisher. Along with all those, even if you're following all the laws and rules, if it's a nuisance and it's putting off a lot of smoke and bothering a lot of people, any fire pit can be extinguished. We do have a fire pit guideline. It has the state laws. And what we can do in the city, I think Kristin was going to put it on the webpage. There's some extra copies in the city building if anybody needs that. Should be on our website, too, or you're more welcome to give me a call. Questions?
I believe you had, you had an add to staff in the budget, correct?
Pardon me?
Did you guys have add to staff on the budget for this year?
We were able to, we budgeted, and we were able to get back to five per shift.
Okay, so you're fully staffed now at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Haffill, Police Department.
I have my report. We've been pretty busy. Just, we've had a lot of events over the last month. We had Rock the River. That was pretty uneventful. Riverfest, that was pretty uneventful. Opening day of the Uh, that was pretty uneventful. River Fest, uh, that was pretty uneventful. Uh, opening day of the football. That did pretty good. They, it was a long night of overtime for some of the guys. I think it was 10:30 at night. They, they finally got out of there, but, we will be helping with homecoming. We'll be, I guess, since we're changing it, we were usually down here going up to Davis Field. Now they've changed it from Davis Field. So we usually block, we'll be blocking the, uh, eastbound lane. So, uh, it's usually pretty quick and uneventful, uh, to get them back and forth. We usually don't have any problems. And then just upcoming things, we just, Caleb's going to be graduating, uh, Thursday. Uh, we graduate in the academy, so he's ready to go get on the street.
Excellent.
He's our fully staffed individual we've been waiting for. Uh, so he'll be on thirds. Social worker's been doing really good. We've had a lot of, uh, mental health issues that she's helped us on and addressed. So she's been a really good resource for us. So, uh, we're just continuing to, you know, take things in stride month to month and day to day. That's about it. I think, uh, one thing that kind of stood out was parking complaints again. Uh, I think we had 58 for the month. And that's not including the ones that Cassie gets and the ones we get called into the office. So you can probably add another, what? 30 on to that. So we've been dealing with a lot of parking complaints, uh, over the last month.
We're good.
We've been trying to take care of it as best we can.
We also got a noise complaint about the cruises on the river again, apparently starting up again. So we're scheduled to meet with the people who operate the, uh, Queen City Arena, uh, either tomorrow or Friday.
Yeah, I sent you an email.
Okay, I haven't seen it yet.
Reply to it, yeah. I've been stuck in training for the last two days.
But if we're going to have to deal with that again, which was an issue last year.
Yep.
And do you guys have the 5K coming up at October the 5th? Is that still?
Uh, yes. Uh, we're going to have a 5K. I'm not sure of the participants. Uh, I'm going to try to do it. I'm not, I haven't been training, so I need to, time's running out for me. So, uh, I think we got an okay amount. We got a lot of sponsors. They really hit the pavement. Uh, Sergeant Lynn Kugel and Officer Howell. They got a lot of sponsors, sponsors. It's a Halloween fun run that we're doing for breast cancer and we just got a lot of, uh, this is something new. Just trying something new, new event. And then of course we'll be, you know, at the monument. We'll probably do that this year, hopefully weather permitting. You know, hand out stuff for the kids and stuff, so.
And that flyer says run slash walk because I'm signing off. So you can walk it.
And you are supposed to dress up in some type of costume.
I just want to say you are allowed to walk.
You are allowed to walk. It's a walk slash run. I'll probably be walking with you.
Chief, you mentioned, you mentioned the parking complaints, 58 of them, which is chewing up a lot of time for your officers. What, what are these all about and what's the solution to this? Is this?
Uh, well, that's the added, added, uh, I think, report for the month that I put in there by citation for violations. It's fire plates. Usually we get a lot of neighbor complaints. The neighbors want to complain on the other neighbors for their cars not moving and we're getting a lot more people in the city, so parking spaces are very limited and, uh, neighbors are calling on neighbors because their cars aren't moving, spots are being taken. So we're still doing the out of state plates. A little bit of time expired tags and inoperable vehicles and getting those off the street when we find them.
So it's like the 48 hour?
Yeah, the 48 hour. Yeah. So, uh, left side of curb, overtime parking, that was like six. Some, some handicapped spots have been taken. You know, blocking driveways, it's a whole abundance of complaints. So it's not just narrowed down to one thing. So.
To a day.
Yeah, yeah. Every day is different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have any other questions for Chief Haffill? All right. Thank you, Chief. Brings us up to Mr. Fawcett's report. Mr. Fawcett, the City Minister of Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So last meeting went late, so I didn't do a report, so I had to write it out tonight, so I got a few things to talk about. First and foremost, I had a pre-construction meeting today with Mike Yeager, our city engineer, Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and a representative of Pruse, um, Concrete and Construction, who is doing our Phase 2 and Phase 3 of Riverfront Commons. And so I have some update on some, on the timeline for that. So, um, according to, um, the contractor, um, he will, uh, his company will start tree removal and clearing work, uh, either the last week of this month or early October. By mid-October, the contractor will seed the exposed top soil. Then the contractor will place aggregate along the trail path after this work is done. They expect to start pouring concrete after the aggregate has been placed in mid-November. And this work will continue through the winter months, weather permitting, and into the spring. The expected completion date of Phase 2 and 3, which will run from its current terminus, uh, at the SD1 Outfall at McKinney to, uh, the Mary Ingalls Road, will be scheduled for completion on the May 1st of, uh, the spring. So that's good. They'll be working on it this winter as, uh, the weather allows. Also got good news today about the levy walk at the River Commons, which is a grant we have before OKI to upgrade the trail on top of the levy by widening it, adding access, an access point at the eastern end of the trail and installing new amenities along the trail. We learned today from Mike Yeager that the OKI staff has given this project a high score, which is a good sign for federal funding. But we won't know for sure until a final decision is made by OKI next month. Uh, if this project is approved next month, we're hopeful that it can be constructed next year so that we will then have a brand new three mile loop on the upper and lower trails in our city that are connected. So that's good news. So, uh, a lot of stuff's been going on at Gildan Park and that's one of the reasons Rick and his crew have been so busy. Uh, they've removed all the old playground equipment that's there and installation of the new playground equipment is expected to start the week of September 22nd, which is not next week, but the week after. Work on the pickleball court continues. The asphalt has been installed and the one-month curing period is over. So the painting crew has been leveling the low spots in the court. And once this is done, the courts will be painted and striped. And then, uh, we will put up the fencing that already has the poles in place, but we had to wait installing the fencing until the, that work is done. We've also, uh, constructed two retaining walls for the area. Uh, the Public Works crew has leveled the areas around pickleball courts. They've seeded the area and strawed it. Already have grass growing and, um, and that's where we are with pickleball courts. So I think, uh, we're on track to have those done here very soon. We've also taken out the old fence that ran along Green Devil Drive. Um, and, um, we were going to put on new fencing there when the playground equipment work is done. Uh, that will be fencing that looks like the fencing that the football field has. So it will match, uh, in, in style. Manhattan Boulevard, uh, today, um, no, permanent no parking signs were installed on the south side of the street, which we've been waiting for some hardware to get those up and we finally got it and they have been installed. They look good. The temporary ones were taken down. So that's good news. So the Public Works, uh, building site on Third Avenue, Chief Shaffer talked about the fact that they've removed the training facility there, which we appreciate. So today, uh, Public Works crew members start removing the fencing around this property. A tree removal contractor is expected to take down, I think, what was it, 14 trees, some pretty large ones on this site, and that will start on September 15th. Uh, the city staff's also been in discussion with architectural firms about design plans for the building at this site and we're having a call on that tomorrow. And finally, curb painting on Sixth Avenue. I know some people have raised this issue. They, they do need to be painted. I was able to walk, um, the whole avenue with Public Works folks, uh, last week. We identified the curbs that need to be repainted and repaired. Unfortunately, they've been busy on time sensitive issues, so they really may have time to do it. So I think we'll be able to get to that hopefully either later this week or next week. So that's pretty much, there's a lot more going on, but that's the highlights. Happy to answer any questions.
Could you repeat the tree part? Why are you taking trees down? I, I didn't hear that part.
There are about 14 trees that are on Third Avenue where we're going to build the new Public Works facility. They all have to come down. So, uh, Rick's in the process of getting the fencing down now. The trees come down. And then we will start the design process. Um, and that will take some time. We'll have to bid that out, but we're working with architecture firms now to move that process forward.
Okay, thanks.
Quick question for me. On the engineering report that was provided to us, uh, it mentions a lineup item about Velo apartments and how we're going to have to take chunks of their sidewalk out in order to build the Riverfront Commons area. And then we're going to bill them for the work done on that?
Um, that we, that, this is a point of contention with Velo. So we sent them the design plans for, um, what we want there to match up with what we want on the Riverfront Trail, which is a much wider sidewalk. They got approval from Campbell County just to put a normal sidewalk in there. They're saying we got county approval. And I said, well, we also, we sent you this before you built the sidewalks. You should have built it right. So it's a point of contention with them that we're trying to address and, and there's rumors that they may want to build something else in the city. So maybe that will be part of our discussion with them in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a lengthy and great report, Mr. Fawcett. Any other questions for Mr. Fawcett?
Um, what's going on with Dayton Pike, if anything?
So Dayton Pike, you mean the work they're doing in the Water District? So I think they're getting closer. They're, um, I, they said that they were hoping to have it done by the end of this month and I'm hoping that's true, but there's possibly, they said they could go in October, but I think it's looking like they're going to be done by the end of this month. So I don't know. I haven't checked lately on how, I will try to find out on how much more time it looks like they have to do it, but they're getting much closer. I know it's been a, it's been an inconvenience, but it's going to be so much better having a new pipe there because that one leaks every year, a couple of times a year. But I'll, I'll find out and I'll report back to council on that.
Anybody else have any questions for Administrator Fawcett this evening? Well, thank you very much for your lengthy report, sir. Next up is anybody from the audience who's, uh, welcome to join, uh, the podium up here and, uh, address council administration with any of your concerns. Yes, sir. Make sure, uh, if you please state your name and address.
Can you, can you, can you come up to the speaker so people can hear you? You got it? Okay.
We're holding your hand either way. You want to do it?
I brought forward an investigation a year ago.
All right, real quick, your name and address, sir.
Kenneth Moffett, 901 Fifth Avenue. Well, you were aware of the investigation I brought forward a year ago. So it was the chief notified by a lawyer with my second meeting with him, this case is closed. This day I still haven't gotten my documentation of that investigation. Uh, it's almost been a year. How long did I have to wait?
This investigation, if I remember correctly, and I see so many, uh, regarding, uh, your, your truck?
That's correct. And the guy who slammed into it in the parking lot.
Okay.
And the chief, well, this police officer said there's no damage to his other vehicle. So why'd he file a claim for the damage he gave when he slammed into my truck? Well, you told me this case is closed. I'm just waiting for my documentation for this. I haven't gotten, it's almost a year. Next week it'll be a year. They notified me the case is closed. I still haven't seen my documentation.
Chief, why don't you speak into the microphone there?
All right. There was an accident report. Uh, Mr. Moffett wasn't even there. He wasn't, had no bearing in the case. It was a bumper, it was bumper to bumper in the parking lot of the high school. The officer, the officer did a report and that report has been completed. He made a complaint. We even, he came, I think, to counsel several months ago and.
Last year.
Yeah, talked to Alex.
A year ago.
Yeah.
I did.
We did.
And he told me the case is closed. Where's my documentation of it?
I don't know what, I don't know what documentation you're, you're needing.
Bumper to bumper. You weren't there. How you know?
I read the report and I talked to the officer.
Sorry, sir, sir, sir. You'll have to wait for him to, you, people can't hear when you're both speaking at the same time. So let him finish and then you can respond.
Yeah, we're, we're not changing the report. The report as is. He has, he has the report. He's had the report. And he's had some questions. Alex met with him after council meeting and talked to him.
We actually met, uh, he, you came to, yeah, you came to City Hall too. So we sat down and talked.
You requested that.
Correct. And we did look at the report and all the facts involving it.
You didn't show me nothing that day.
And we made a determination that the,
You did.
I, I believe that if I recall the facts and see a lot of them, it was, um, someone that you had loaned your vehicle to that was operating the vehicle.
That's correct.
And it was a girl, if I recall correctly.
That's correct.
And the investigation revealed that she was the at-fault party.
Well, this is why I asked you in the investigation to look into this police officer. It just says bumper to bumper. This guy T-balled my vehicle from a parking space into the side of my truck.
Yeah, and I indicated to you.
Bumper to bumper out of that.
And I indicated to you from a criminal standpoint, the investigation had been completed, that if you wanted to seek remedy, it would be on a civil format. And you promptly thanked me and you left. That was the conversation. I, I took it as a thank you.
Okay. Well, this case, I was going to work the charges against this officer. Documented charges allegedly.
Well, there's no, there would be no charges against the officer. The officer did nothing wrong.
Okay.
The officer took a report.
Okay. Where's the recording of this guy's body cam? If he knew this was going to happen before it happened. That's what he said in writing.
Yeah, I have to check on the body cam. I don't know if we had body cam two years ago.
I, I doubt.
I don't believe, I don't know if we had body cam two years ago.
We did.
Okay. Well, then you should have had it.
That's right. I should have. Where was it?
You got to file an open records request for that.
My name's mentioned on the report.
It doesn't matter. You have, if you want, sir, we'll speak after the meeting.
No, we ain't doing that again. Last time I did that, he gave you his point of view.
And I told you my point of view and that's it. It's, we're, it's done. The investigation's over with.
I have an option to go outside the city, right?
Sure.
I'm sure.
Now, I did nine years ago before I came to your office, reached out to the state police then. Why he resigned nine years ago?
He never resigned. Uh, he did.
I retired.
Chief Haffill never retired.
He retired.
I retired five years ago.
Okay.
That was five years ago, not nine.
Five years, five years ago. Yeah.
Okay.
But if you want to take it further, we're.
I'm more happy to. And we've given them instructions and talking to the city attorney on how to do so.
It's a civil matter. It's an issue of, you believe it to be, the officer was not a, an eyewitness to it anyway. The issue, the issue was, is that there were two parties involved, including the one that you loaned the vehicle to.
This police officer claims he is an eyewitness.
So if I were, again, my recollection is, is that the woman that you lent your vehicle to was the at-fault, at the at-fault driver. No, that's what the investigation revealed. That was my recommendation.
Investigation. That's another, you said an internal review was done or a review was done. Who did that review?
The review was completed by the officer that was at the scene, sir.
Sorry?
The, the review was completed by the officer that was at the scene. If you have a concern about whether or not it's all, you then have a civil remedy, not a criminal remedy, a civil remedy to bring an action against the driver that struck the vehicle.
Okay. Uh, last thing I heard, the open records request is not combined with a public records request? Are they both on the same page?
I didn't understand the question.
Your open records request for like police department documentation and a public records request, they've been combined?
It's the same. It's those terms, those terms the same.
No, if he wants body cam, he has to file an open records request.
You're more welcome to come down.
You have, you have a right to have the report because your name, your vehicle, uh, is listed in the report. But if you want a copy of the body cam, you have to file an open records request.
Okay. As long as you hear this police officer says there's no damage to vehicle number two.
The officer said there's, the damage that you're saying happened to the vehicle was not consistent with what happened in the accident.
Number two vehicle.
This is a court issue, correct?
It's a civil issue. It's a civil, it's a civil matter.
Hold on there. Now you asked me to stop to let him talk. Can I talk now? This police officer says no damage was done to the vehicle number two because he clipped his bumper allegedly. This guy filed a claim with my insurance company for the damage that he did when he ran into my truck. Where's that? That's in this report too, right?
You're the at-fault party.
I'm clear.
Your unit is the at-fault party and that vehicle ran into the other vehicle. That's what the report states.
Ran into it? First you just said it was bumper to bumper. Now you say you ran into it. Which one is it?
I feel like I'm getting nowhere here.
Yeah.
So we want to.
Just like I've been getting nowhere. Okay, no problem.
We, we've explained to him multiple times and tried to help him multiple times.
You'll be available tomorrow?
How to do it.
Uh, no, I will not be in my office tomorrow. The police will be on there Thursday.
Well, I have a report this Thursday. Friday?
Uh, I don't know. Off my head. Uh, I don't know. Off the top of my head.
Uh, especially guys, when I.
Well, Alex will be there tomorrow. I, I could possibly be there tomorrow. I have a busy day.
I don't know. I got, we didn't talk anymore.
Well, he is our attorney, so, he is our attorney, so you, you'll, you will need to work with him as well.
I already tried to work with him.
Okay.
I got a plain and simple, this case is closed. That's the end of it.
And that's a fact. The case is closed.
I don't get the documentation for the charges I brought forward.
You're rem, you, first of all, you brought the report in that day that we reviewed together. You have the report. If you want to make another subsequent request, you can do so as permitted by the law. If you want a remedy, then you have a civil remedy that you can pursue. As far as, from a criminal standpoint, the city is complete with an investigation.
When I fill out this open records request tomorrow, how long does it take for me to get that documentation?
We'll process it within 10 days.
10 days? Okay. So I got.
Thanks, Ken.
You did. Unfortunately, I think this is gonna wind up going outside the city. I wish it didn't have to, but.
We appreciate your, uh, decisions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address council administration? Anyone? Anyone? All right. Any new business? Counsel. Uh, then don't forget that we have September 30th as a secondary meeting to discuss the budget.
5:30 here, 6 o'clock at the school board.
Okay, so, uh, mark your calendars to be here.
So I'd say, today's the night.
It's, it's the last, it's the last Tuesday, not the fourth Tuesday. It's the fifth Tuesday.
And why not the fourth Tuesday?
KLC is having a conference in Owensboro on the fourth Tuesday?
More importantly, the school district could not, they could not do, this was scheduled with, with the school district in mind. They couldn't do that Tuesday. There's a joint meeting of the school district board members.
Okay.
At 6 o'clock. And they, they requested this, we, we suggested this fourth, the second Tuesday.
Right.
But they, they could not do it. So they asked this to be the last Tuesday tomorrow.
So this is a special meeting?
Yeah.
The only thing on the.
Both are special meetings. So ours is a special meeting here, second reading of the, of the tax rate and a public hearing on that. I think we also have a public hearing on municipal road aid, if anybody wants to come talk about that. Uh, after that, we only, I think, half an hour. We don't think it's gonna take much more than that. We go across the way here to the Board of Education or the joint meeting with the school board members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Remember, you made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Horton's made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? See y'all on the 30th.